To order, would you all please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
And certainly, in times like this, it just, I feel a lot more passionate every time I hear those words. What we aspire to be as a country. The optional prayer invocation at this time from councilman Showerman, please.
Yes, this is a prayer that's typically set in the morning, but I'm going to say it in the afternoon. But this is the beginning of a new day and God has given us this day to use as we will. We can waste it or use it for good, but what we do with today is important. Because we are exchanging a day of our life for it. When tomorrow comes, this day will be gone forever, leaving in its place something that we have traded it for. We want it to be a gain and not a loss, a good and not evil, success and not failure. In order that we shall not regret the price that we paid for it.
Very nice.
That is very nice, is a great reflection. At this time, we have roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Clear.
Here.
Mr. Rastetter.
Here.
Mrs. Rennie.
Here.
Mrs. Showerman.
Here.
Mr. Shank.
Here.
Chairman Horton.
Here. Under item four, we, this is the top part of the, our meeting that we allow time to hear from the public. If you've called ahead and I don't see that anyone has, we would have allotted you five minutes. If there's anyone on the line who's designed to speak in this segment right now, we would allot you three minutes. And out about the call, are there any citizens at this time from the public desiring to be heard? Are there any citizens from the public desiring to be heard? Hearing or seeing none. I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the minute, of the minutes from the October twentieth regular meeting. And from the November fifth budget hearing of the public.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been properly moved and seconded by councilman Shane and councilman Rastetter. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Call for the question.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Clear.
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman.
Yes.
Mr. Shank.
Yes.
Chairman Horton.
Yes. Item six on our agenda, if you are, anyone's following along. This is the section titled Reports of County Fishing. And Mr. Sparber, I apologize for not asking you during caucus, would you, or the administrator, or anyone for designated needs have a report tonight?
Not tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you so very much, Mr. Sparber. Finance Committee Chairman Clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, today, or I'm sorry, on Thursday, the, um, I'm so sorry, on Thursday, November fifth, the Finance Committee met and I am presenting today, um, new business, I'm sorry, old business A through T and old business A through F. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chairman Rennie and Personnel Committee.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Personnel Committee also met on Thursday, November fifth. I am bringing items G through X for tonight's agenda under Old Business.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. At this time, Vice Chairman Anderson has indicated that he want, that he would be giving a report from the Election Board. And we will entertain, we will entertain that report at this time.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to give an update to everybody as to where we stand. November third, twenty twenty, we held the general election this year where we began the, the pre-canvas in the morning, which turned into the canvas at eight P M. And we're still in the canvas period until this evening. The good news is that we are well, well on time, if not ahead of schedule and will complete as required by the state election codes that we have. And all of that is due specifically to the absolute outstanding staff that we have in Erie County. I am so pleased and honored to work with all of these people. And to be able to see firsthand the dedication of every single one of them. And leadership begins at the top and without question, our clerk Doug Smith has been a sterling and shining example of leadership at its best, of fairness, of unbiased, unrelenting, un- nerving, on the inability to fluster the, the total of professionalism and dedication to this community. And we, we are fortunate to have him. And that certainly goes for the rest of the staff, including our supervisor, Tanya Fernandez, whose dedication and knowledge and commitment and belief in our system and the way it works and her employees is, is second to none. They, they have just been outstanding. I mean, I could go on and on with praise of, of all of them. They have really done just a magnificent job in taking a hold of the, the new voter system that we had voted in and asked them to institute for us and to continue to learn that system and to keep the voters in mind first and foremost in Erie County. They're, they're dedicated so intently with the desire to help the voter and give them every opportunity to enfranchise the voter, not disenfranchise the voter. And they just truly go above and beyond what could be expected of them in, in their duties. And I, I just, I could go on and on and, and you know, I, I won't continue to do that tonight, Mr. Chairman, but with just an outstanding group of people. We are, as I said, on, on track, on schedule. And, and I want to thank you, my colleagues and members of the board who also have shown outstanding leadership and commitment. Every single member of the board has participated in the election process as duties from your board, the board seat and as a member of county council. That has not happened in the past. And, you know, it's just refreshing to know that there's such dedication of everybody involved. And particularly, I have to say to Vice Chairwoman Mary Rennie, who has been committed and involved and engaged every step of the way this year. It's been a daunting task with her first year on council and she has just been there and participated endlessly in all the activities that have happened. So I just, again, can't say enough about the, the way this election has, has gone and all of us in Erie County can be proud. So tonight, we will bring the count of the election as we are required to a conclusion. We will do that on time with reporting our first unofficial count to the state of all the types of ballots that we need to report. We then will wait until after the twelfth of November in the event that there is the possibility of a statewide mandated recount, if one of the races is within a half a percentage point, that would be instituted. So we will have to participate in that if the state deems that that will happen and, and we will be informed by November twelfth. So please stay tuned for that. We will have to have a meeting to certify the, the final vote count by November twenty-third. When all of these other potential court cases and challenges have cleared the docket, we will formalize the exact date, but we're looking perhaps around the twenty-first or twenty-second for the board to meet to finalize. But in the event that there's the possibility of challenges with provisional ballots, we would have seven days from those challenges to hold a hearing of the board. And that may, could still be a possibility, although I will say that there were challenges put forward yesterday that were then withdrawn at the end of the day. And it appears today that the indications are that there will not be any formal challenges to the provisional ballots because they have witnessed, the watchers have witnessed what Erie County has done and they believe that Erie County is following all the guidelines and that there isn't anything further that they need to challenge beyond what we've already done. So we don't anticipate the possibility of, of having to have that meeting, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. But those things we will finalize as they come about. And Mr. Chairman, it, it's just with great honor that I report to you and the rest of our colleagues that we, we did it. We got through the twenty twenty general election. We did it with honor and dignity. We did it with class and grace. And we did it in the style that Erie County does the best. And we will do it in a fair and impartial way, reporting the results as they come in in an unbiased manner. And, and the voters will have the confidence that the system and the process worked correctly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Anderson.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add a postscript to that report, if I may, as the vice chair of elections. I can't say it really better than Chairman Anderson for the Elections Board. However, I, I will say that we couldn't have done this in many ways without his knowledgeable leadership. Chairman Anderson's steadfastness, steadiness under pressure and his ability to be calm while in the eye of a storm. So we, we have a lot and a debt of gratitude that we and all of Erie County owe to Chairman Anderson with this election. I agree wholeheartedly with the rest of what he stated. And I, I will also add that under the current circumstances, there, there's a lot of cynicism that is spread throughout. Regardless of party affiliation, there is a lot, lot of cynicism. People may wonder whether things like truth or integrity or competence, professionalism are things that really exist. And honestly, after watching it for the past two weeks, almost two weeks now, I can say again, wholeheartedly that yes, they do. And if it's, if they exist here with the elections staff, with the director of elections, with Douglas Smith and Tanya Fernandez and the rest of the staff down there, it certainly exists elsewhere. We just need to know where to look for it. And I just can't say enough about them. They are a true example of grace under pressure. I'm, I'm so grateful to everyone down there in voter registration and elections. Thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Well, I'll exercise chairman prerogative and I'll comment also because leadership does start at the top. And we, Carl, we back in January, you know, you were the chair last year. And we knew Act seventy-seven, all of this stuff was coming. And actually to be, to, to chair the Board of Elections again this year. And it, it wasn't a mistake. You are Godsend. You did perform with a lot of pressure. You represented not only this body, but this county very, very well. I appreciate it as the chairman of council. I appreciate it as your colleague, one of seven. And I couldn't be more proud of the leadership, not only you, but Vice Chairman Rennie as well. Showed throughout this entire year, not just the general election, but just the entire year. As we shepherded us through all the Act seventy-seven changes and all the new voter registration. Your job's not done because this litigation could go somewhere else. So we're telling you all this nice stuff to butter you up so you won't get and slow down on us because the race isn't over yet. So thank you all and every member of council, thank you for being, for participating to the levels that you were able to. And we'll move on to Old Business. Mr. Smith, would you please give us the second reading of ordinance number eighty-one entitled only, please?
Second reading of ordinance number eighty-one, twenty twenty, repealing ordinance number one oh four of twenty eighteen, which amended ordinance forty-five of twenty eighteen, Article five subsection C three of the Erie County Human Relations Commission and amending ordinance forty-five of twenty eighteen, Article five, section C three of the Human Relations Commission.
Hearing, I'll entertain.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by Vice Chairman Anderson. And Councilwoman Rennie, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have done quite a bit of research on this particular, these, these next two particular ordinances and how they are involved with the Human Relations Commission. And I was involved with the, the changes that were made two years ago. And when we made those changes, we made those changes to ensure a positive direction for the Human Relations Commission and set a positive tone which has been no, no short of very successful in the last two years. I certainly want everyone to know that I, I'm going to vote no on these next two ordinances. And the primary reason is because I can see no, no reason for us to make changes in something that has been working so good. And if it's not broke, don't fix it. But furthermore, I, I've looked at the Allegheny County Human Relations Commission. I have all of this in front of me, Redding, the city of Philadelphia, Allentown. And Erie follows, and, and the state Human Relations Commission as it relates to in section twelve point one in the local human relations commissions. And I believe that what Erie did two years ago puts us on par with setting up exactly the way everyone else does it. The, the commission itself, County Council is the commission. The people who we appoint are the commissioners. And so it falls under our responsibility to ensure this, the success and the direction of this organization. And I just believe that we would be going backwards and making any changes to these ordinances. And that it would be irresponsible for us to turn over our authority to volunteers and then have county staff supervising county employees who are then are, are hired and really fall under the jurisdiction of volunteers. And I think that would be a dangerous precedence for us to set as it was when this process happened before. We ultimately have the responsibility of this organization and the responsibility to the taxpayers. And we, we in fact, you know, will be either credited or blamed for the outcome of that responsibility. And therefore, we, we need to retain that responsibility. And furthermore, any lack of clarity in the state guidelines or in any other organization, in any other human relations organization throughout the state, we clarify any of that in our administrative code, which we did two years ago. And so we certainly are following any and all guidelines that we need to. And certainly following all of the guidelines that all of these other HRCs, as I've mentioned, are following. And in fact, we're, we're probably in many cases doing it better than them. The only ones who may not retain the, the, the employment or the control of the employees under their jurisdiction are those that are set off as a separate five oh one C three and just get funding from a local community governmental agency of a community. But get funding from other potential outside sources. But this organization as an agency of the county, I believe, is set up in a way that works and should continue to work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With all due respect to Councilman Anderson's comments, which I found a lot to agree with actually in what he stated. However, there are human relation commissions that do in fact either participate or take charge in appointing the director of the Human Relation Commission that they, that they oversee or that they are a member of. I, I think it's actually a healthier situation, to be honest with you, that the Human Relations Commission be the ones to select their director and their staff, which would be primarily the director and their administrative staff. I think it's healthier for them to be independent. And I will be supporting both of these ordinances for that reason. And just as a, a secondary observation, when county council is in charge of making an appointment such as director over something like the Human Relations Commission, it may be that we ultimately oversee it, but when we take that directive a hand in making an appointment, my fear is that it would tend to look very political. Any appointment that we might make. And I think we should avoid the appearance of that. So while again, much of what he said is true, for the reasons that I stated, I will be supporting both of those ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Any other members of council?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've looked into this problem and it's been described to me by some of the commissioners that there, there's a little bit of a war or feud going on there. Some describe it as a war of they, you know, young against the older people or a war of the sexes, but I don't think at this time that they're really capable of, of of directing themselves or, or hiring directors. Especially because most of them are, have only been there a year or two. And with, with the feuding going on, I, I think we should see if they can't work that out between themselves. Because that is the basis of the Human Relations Commission. They, they're supposed to work out problems between parties. So if they can't work it out, they're not going to be able to work it out whether they're directing themselves or they're listening to somebody that we choose to direct them. That's all.
I'm sorry, were you through, Ms. Councilman Rastetter? Any other council members to be heard?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would just like to say that the people that are being hired are going to be county employees. The county's responsible for them and the county is paying them. And I think it's ridiculous for the county not to have any say in who hired, who is being hired. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council persons to be heard? Well, I'll say, I'll say something. Because I have a unique seat at the table. When the commission was first founded, it was in fact council did the hiring for a number of years. Later on, council found that it was not in compliance or not. It didn't line up with the state law, which we've had our own county solicitor come in and give us that same opinion out of four hundred and fifty HRCs in the Commonwealth. It appears we're the only one who does it this way. We came back and amended it partly because of the issue that is going on now. That being, no one knew who was in charge. The advisory board, those, all the commissioners I knew. Most of them, the commissioners thought they worked for the executive director, which they don't. In fact, they're like judges. They're independent arbiters of the truth and finders of fact. And by that very nature of that position should be independent. We made the change back after quite a few years of futility. Putting the time. And we went through another hiring process. The commission has turned some things around. Still not, it's still, the way it's set up still runs contrary to state law. Those commissioners are often, you know, in a way like judges. And they shouldn't have anything influencing them. And they should be able to have some say so on this staff. Under both scenarios, county councils chief clerk retaining direct supervisory responsibilities. I think it's time to do the right thing. And to truly make them independent so that they can truly be independent arbiters of the truth and finders of fact. And their job isn't to work things out. The parties have to work that out, that stuff out between themselves. Sometimes it results in litigation. The commissioners just come back with what you call a finding of fact. And they encourage the two parties to work together. And if they can't work it out, they give the report to the aggrieved party, which is real grounds for them to go and litigate. And so in summation, in, in order for the commission to truly be independent, this ordinance should be adopted, amended, and it should be set back right like it was. Because they have made advances. The only reason council took it was for them to write. I don't, I try not to get into the feud stuff. I'm aware of all of that stuff too. Don't care about any of that stuff. I've gone through great pains not to be involved in it. But it's time for us to, to give them back their independence so that they can serve like the other 450 HRC offices throughout the Commonwealth. And I'll call for the question.
On the matter of ordinance 81, 2020. Mrs. Clear?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Mr. Shank?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Mr. Smith, could you give me the second reading of ordinance number 82 entitled only, please?
Second reading, ordinance number 82, 2020, repealing ordinance 105 of 2018, which amended Article 2 subsection 543(c)(5) of the Administrative Code, amending Article 2, Section 543(c)(5) of the Administrative Code of Erie County.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. I didn't see who moved it, who?
I, I did, Mr. Chairman.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Councilman Anderson and Rastetter. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to state as a companion to the first ordinance number 81, that I will be consistent in the, the vote that I gave and will be voting no on this particular item.
Any other council people to be heard? Call for the question?
An ordinance 82, Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Mr. Shank?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Clear?
No.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Mr. Smith, would you please give the second reading of ordinance number 83 entitled?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Chairman.
I wanted to move to table letters C through T on the agenda of old business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Entertainer second. It's been properly moved and seconded by council persons Clear and Anderson. Is there any discussion? Call for the question?
On the tabling of items C through T, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Okay, first read, under new business, first reading of ordinance number 10101, Mr. Smith, entitled only.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. I want, I move to, sorry, A through D to a second read. Items A through D to a second read.
Need a second?
Second.
Been properly moved by council persons Clear and Shank. Call for the question?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a, before we amend the agenda, could I ask for a clarification? And, and I, maybe I missed this earlier, so I would apologize. But we need to have a, it's my understanding, we need to have a separate ordinance for what we will be creating as the community college item, and we don't have that on the agenda yet for the, although I know we received the budget today for our consideration of them as we're doing our budget deliberations. But it's my understanding that we have to add them in as a separate ordinance at, at some, some point before we finalize the budget. So just to catch it up with these other ordinance who have already had a first reading. Do, do we have that language tonight? Or is that something that we're going to do at the next meeting? And then do a first reading and catch up with a second?
I, I propose we do it at the, at the next meeting and catch it up there at the second. It gives everyone a chance to go back and look at the budget if it was sent out today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're so welcome. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Call for the question on the amendment.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Mr. Smith, I have a second reading of ordinance number 101 entitled only, please.
A second reading of ordinance 101, 2020. Eighth 2020 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $1,000 for connecting you to coverage grant from the American Library Association.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by council persons Rennie and Clear. Is there any discussion? Roll call on the question, please, Mr. Smith.
An ordinance 101, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 102 entitled only, please.
The second reading of ordinance number 102, 2020. Ninth 2020 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $4,909 from the Regional Library Foundation for the Bookmobile Campaign.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by council persons Rennie and Rastetter. Is there any discussion? Call for the question?
An ordinance 102, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 103 entitled only, please.
The second reading of ordinance number 103, 2020. Third 2020 Planning Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $40,450, creation of a new, of a new bureau and light items for CDBG program grant to Mill Creek Township for COVID-19 activities.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council person Showerman and Clear. Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
An ordinance 103, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Matt, please have the reading of, second reading of ordinance number 104 entitled only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 104, 2020. Second 2020 Capital Projects Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $94,465, creation of new bureau and new line items to create offices for intake officers in the Department of Domestic Relations.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by council person Showerman and Rennie. Any discussion? Call for the question?
An ordinance 104, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Resolution number 55, title only.
Resolution number 55, 2020, approving appointment of deputy tax collector in Edinburgh Borough, Pennsylvania.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by council's person Showerman and Shank. Is there any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. Call for the question?
On resolution 55, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. Possible sale parcels from the repository. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by council person Shank and Clear. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Unsale of parcels, miss, parcel rather, Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes.
May I ask who is the second on that? I have Mr. Shank as the initial.
Clear, Councilman Clear. If we have about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could, could I ask for a motion to, if we could amend the agenda to read items G through X in one motion? And I would be willing to have a friendly amendment from Councilwoman Rennie if she would like to have letter W separated because that is her appointment. But all, all the rest are appointments from the county executive, who wouldn't be here to speak on each of these individually. So I could make the motion if she would like to have W separated to read all of these as one motion. Items G through, through V and then X. Would, would you like to have them separated?
Mr. Chair, I would agree with having all of them G through X as one. Thank you, with no separating.
Okay, then I, I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman. G through X as one motion.
I'll entertain a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded on the amendment. Group them all together. Motion by Vice Chairman Anderson and seconded by Councilman Shank. Roll call on the amendment, please.
The motion, Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion on the, on the, on the appointments of B through X.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded by council persons Showerman and Clear. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. I think there's a, a mispart in the item A after the adjournment and the dates. It says October 15th, 2020, Thursday, October 15th, 2020. And the next regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 20th. So that has to be reconciled. I believe that Finance Chairman Clear has called for budget session follow-up after the finance meeting on this Thursday. And if there, is there anything else for the good of the order? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, guys.